I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order for Thursday, October 10th, 2019 at 7:30 is at the Lakeville Police Station on Bedlam Street, Lakeville. Our first meeting here. And first on the agenda is to meet with Zenith Consulting engineers on a continued review for Five Harding Street. Mr. Bissonnet, if you please.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonnet and Zenith Consulting engineer, all right. At the last meeting, we talked about bringing in some schematics of the building.
Oh, cool.
Which we've...
Thank you. Ian Dron.
Yeah, yes.
Very nice. Old school.
It is old school. So as you'll know, on the backside, we'll have the garage doors. On the front, we'll have the office with the windows, like we discussed. I think one of the questions that had come up was regarding zoning on the building height. Building height will definitely be below the 35 feet zoning maximum height.
32 is the max right now, and that's the top of the decorative piece. So the very top would be 32.
And I also believe there was the question of the culvert in the access road. We're actually going to be replacing that completely. So there'll be a new pipe in that area. So that won't be an issue as well.
Did you know the width of what you're going to replace it with? Are you going to go wider?
It is going to be wider. There's going to be retaining walls on both sides because of the grade change in that area for stormwater management. So there'll be some small walls on the side which will monitor them.
Oh, so it's going to be the basic same size culvert, but now you'll have retaining walls?
Correct.
Okay, so.
The same size Diana?
I believe it's the same size Diana, yeah.
Are you going to go wider for the road?
The road will be wider, yes, in that area. Not by a lot. It won't be much, but there is going to be a little bit. And again, the grade change and the change too is purely for slope to meet stormwater management with treatment and everything else.
So you're going to water back onto the site?
Yeah, we have to pitch appropriate floats, the catch basin, so it can be treated prior to this.
Yep.
And that came up because of the actual comment from the fire department. And I had since let the chief know also. He's going to review the plans. He had two common stack and a hydrant. And I let him know the building was sprinkled, which now there's going to be connections bottom, but I did agree and you guys can make it a note if he wants a hydrant back there. I told him we put one in.
He wants one back in front or just in back?
He hasn't told me where he wants them yet.
Just because it's so far from the road, I think he just wants them closer to the building?
Yeah, I don't think they knew it was sprinkled at the beginning, honestly, though. I know it's a different type of drum building itself in different locations. But he said if you want them there, I'll put one in. Just let me know where, so.
Do you get a fire department connection on the building as well?
I believe they have acquired them, yeah.
Yes, should be. Okay, cool.
Yeah, I even had to do that at Water Street, put those connections in.
Very good.
I think that would be sufficient for a single standalone building.
What?
I think we would need a motion to put a hydrant in addition.
No, no, no. We don't need a motion to add.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying.
No, the hydrant's $700. And I told him if he wanted one, I'll do it. So I'll just do it if that's what he wants.
That's like a, you know, something, it's a negotiation with the fire department.
Yeah, if they tell us they want it, we provide it.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple.
Standing.
So it was the fire department who wanted it wider, the culvert and the building?
That's right.
He wanted it to withstand the weight of the...
The truck.
Equipment.
Yeah, so this definitely will. The pipes that we've specified on site, it's the H20. They can meet a minimum of H20, which is exactly that.
Are you showing 24 feet of paving?
Mm-hmm.
Plus curb.
Plus curb. Yes, they probably.
You still have conservation that you're...
We have the first meeting, so we're in front of them actively with a notice of intent, and we're working with that.
Yes. That's good. Everything seems to be going okay?
Yeah, I mean, they're checking a couple of things. They're going to report back, and obviously, we have to make them happen. You know, that's being order of conditions issued. If that doesn't happen, then...
Yes.
And it's your opinion that there's no impact to the wetland? I think you said that earlier.
Well, what we've said is there's definitely some impact to the floodplain. What we're not doing is we're not being as impactful as the previous project by any stretch.
Sounds special. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this has less impact, less impervious, much, much, much less traffic. We're also closing off the ability to get off to Cross Street. We're going to be putting a bunch of land in conservation trust, so it's going to be monitored by the company to make sure that it's not disturbed. There'll be reported plans with that conservation restriction as well. We're in the works of putting that together with natural heritage and its mother groups.
Do you also have less discharge into the wetlands?
You know, I didn't look at the drainage report from the previous application. Couldn't fit our hands on that. We do it for plans. But you have to assume the best impervious, less runoff.
Yes.
We do have CND soils for the most part out here. So I mean, as an engineer, you understand that it's probably the case.
One of their biggest concerns with the supermarket was their condition was that the building had a white roof because they were afraid the water was going to get too hot from discharge into the whole water stream. We probably have a third of what they had. So I mean, we're not going directly into it anymore. So we're expecting that all to get wrapped up at the next meeting.
And we are infiltrating the roof. So the roof is going underground filtration.
So do you remember the development that we had over on Cross, I think it's Cross Street there, where they put in all those, they put in all those single families?
Shamrock.
Where the, that's the same spot, right? So we had a real water issue over there. Remember those retention ponds we put in? That whole, that's more like a stream behind there. Would that be affected by this property?
That's upgrading of it.
Okay, thank you.
When I say that, I believe it's upgrading of it. It's... I don't think there'll be any impact. I do believe it's upgrading, but it's, we're going to have a turtle nesting area in between with woods and single family houses. I don't think, I don't think, understanding how the McCoy Burke runs and the Taunton River runs, I believe that we're firmly on agreement because we're closer to the culvert that gets to the Taunton River.
I believe so, too.
Yeah. But if you ask me if I've looked at the elevations, I can't say that I have. I just know the discharge and the way that the streams flow. I can't imagine that it could go that way.
So I like the design of the building. It's pretty much an incubated building. I thought I was good at this one. Bobby?
The black part. What's that?
It's the roof.
Yeah. And what's it made of?
It's a panel. It goes straight up. So from the side elevation, you see how one side's higher than the other?
Yep.
So the old plan, you can kind of see where we adjusted it. It used to have an A on it, but...
That's what I see.
But we're getting rid of that now. So that front part is just going to be a different colored panel, maybe black or something, just so it doesn't look like a giant steel building going out. But that gives us the height we need because I guess the biggest problem with these, with the metal roofs, is the snow and the ice running off of them. So the guy recommended now they're trying to go to the single slope. So in the front part, where somebody could go in and out, ice won't fall 20 feet and hit them. And then over the back doors, we're going to be putting little A roofs over the staircases. So if somebody was walking up and it slid down, you know, nobody would get hurt.
So you would call this a parapet? This would be a parapet?
Yes.
And then you would, at the finish, at the end of the building, you would return the parapet until it'll be at the same place?
It's not a parapet. It's a visual surface here. This is on this side.
It's like a vertical or a...
It's a flat panel.
Wall. It goes straight up.
Yeah.
Color change in this wall.
Yeah.
It starts here up. So from here down is this surface.
Yeah, it's essentially siding for a second story thing on the front part.
It's like a two-tone wall.
Yeah.
Okay, so that gutter is not a gutter. That's just...
That's going to, yeah, because the change in the roof line, the guy doesn't need to be on the front anymore. Everything's going to run to the back. And that was the plans he gave me because that had multiple versions. That shows if you put some offices on the second floor, a section of that had windows on the second floor. But basically, until we get it built out and we know, have at least and see what the people want, I mean, a lot of those doorways or windows and stuff could change. But that had a showing. If somebody wanted an all end, if somebody wanted, you know, just first floor, if you wanted to add an office or two...
This isn't the actual plan.
Yeah, that's not...
Because the building is L-shaped, so it doesn't show the corners.
Yeah, it'll basically be two of those doors.
So you may add windows for the mezzanine of some of the units?
Yes.
Okay.
If they wanted it, yeah. And that's why that plan he gave me was the most, it showed them various different ways that that happened, that finished off. Again, it's on 44. I don't even think you're going to see it from the...
No, I was just...
...so far back. But I mean, trust me, it's going to look way nicer than the ones across the street. I mean, so...
So this is the opposite face of it. And this has a decorative... Standing seam roof panels. That's going to be a standing seam roof.
How'd you get my pen?
Do you happen to have, have you guys already seen a site plan? You have.
Yeah.
It's last week.
So the slope of the roof is going to be sloping into the inside corner behind the building.
Yeah.
In theory, when I say the behind, it's that.
The garage.
Away from 44.
The garage door, yeah. So if they did have somebody come up to the front door, nothing's going to fall on. And then what doesn't show them that is, like I said, over the back doors, they can put A roofs on them. Because they say that's their biggest problem with those metal roofs is, you know, is the snow and the ice melting and the...
The metal roofs, they slide right off.
Yeah, slides off. So pitching it all one way alleviates everything from the front and the sidewalk.
Right.
And then by putting those roofs over on the door, it should help that, too.
I'd use those dabbits, too. Those little dabbits go on the roof.
Yeah, this is my first new commercial thing. So I worked for Beacon for years and took care of commercial, but I never had to design anything. A business like this is still building.
Little A frames over the back is good.
Yeah.
Over the doors.
That's just safety.
And there's going to be no road towards Cross Street.
Correct.
One more. The lighting plan.
I think it's just a few coming down the road and hanging on the door.
They could easily put a mezzanine in here. Easily.
Existing conditions?
This is none of our business.
Just for the, if you add curiosity, the small walls and the...
Between the units, steel. If they go, they put steel walls in.
And you don't fill them in until you get it done?
Yeah.
So you leave the concrete?
Yeah.
So we have the worst part.
Well, we put in a culvert, not retention ponds for that building on Cross Street.
So it would have been a night lock. You would have to, or on the other side of the block.
They are, but that water is right here. It's really bad.
For this, you wouldn't?
This is a really good...
I mean, this is...
Even at the store on overall, on Main Street there, it's like crossing Dewey's. That was all steel and then they stuck it over there.
Yeah, it wasn't flowing.
It was nice. I'm afraid you'd lose some extra material cost.
That's not, I don't think that's a cheap building.
No.
There you go.
It's the same frame. It's still fluid. And then they use the zip cord on it and then...
Because like if the phone call.
It does look pretty good, Zach, huh?
Yeah, it does.
And they framed it well.
I'm sure you do.
I did, right?
What's up?
The new place across from Dewey's. The all...
I watched them frame it.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. I mean, this is not a cheap building. The Melestats, Ethers. Commercial driveway.
It'll be way off the road. You're going to see it as well.
Yeah, we kept the footprint, the disturbance footprint from the grocery store, the big box or whatever it was going to be before. We took and actually tried to mimic it in a little bit smaller.
How tall are the light bulbs going down the driveway? Doesn't really show on the plan.
They should be on the details further on in the lighting plan. There's actually, I think it might be on that chart you just passed me up right there for the height.
It doesn't say a foot. Is it 25 feet?
I believe that you're going to see the 25 as a 25-foot hole.
No, I'm good, I have.
So we had a 24-foot curb cut. It's ready to, remember it? We were trying to get a little bit extra out of the, out of the other guy over on Main Street to make it wider.
For the curb cut or for the road size?
The funeral home. The curb cut for the funeral home. And they didn't want to go over 24. This is a good case for having as wide as possible.
Oh, I think this is going to be bigger than that.
The curb cut.
Do you think?
No.
How, why do you think the curb cut will be, as Inc. was asking?
Well, the...
The road's 24 feet.
The road's 24 and then the radius is a 30.
Yeah.
Mass DOT really gives you a hard time about going wider and bigger radius. And it's because of the speed in which you can take the turn. And so, so then, when we sit down and we talk to them about that, they'll let you get up to 30 in some cases, but it's, they'll bring you in, sit down, you have to explain as to why and convince them for them to give you the curb cut from about the 40. Or any other street highlight. So I think the 30s to the 24 is going to be what we're looking for unless there's hard justification for it.
There's a, yeah, there's a lot of traffic here.
Could you revise the retention ponds, retention basins that you did from the plan that was previously there? These look pretty big.
Yeah, the whole site has been designed different than...
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't take, we dug new test holes to confirm situations. Yeah, so the drainage design is completely...
Updated.
Yeah. We've included, you have a drain report. And yeah, conservation, everybody does.
So we'll wait near back with Conservation?
Yes, we have a meeting with them. I told them to...
So you'll be back with us again after that?
Yeah. Yep.
So basically, we have a proposal for the building, the facade, what it looks like. And I would entertain a motion to continue this until we hear from Conservation if that is okay.
I'd make a motion to continue until we hear from Conservation.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I think some of these people came, these are some of the people who don't think it's own, they think it's own residential or not.
Well, they have absolutely the opportunity to speak up.
Oh, okay. I thought you were closing on...
No, no, I know. No, I mean, does anyone want to speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's...
There's two girls from 36 Cross Street.
Okay.
Can't say I'm against it. I'm not going to say I'm against it. I'm just going to say, I don't know, I don't know, this is the first I'm hearing about this. I guess there was lettuce that went out. Certified lettuce. Never got one. I don't know what the problem was. Now, you say there's going to be no impact from Five Harding to Cross Street. Is that right?
There's going to be no access from that site to Cross Street commercially?
Commercially?
Yeah.
What about a second means of access for the fire department? I know there's a fire access road, so that access road, that would be gone and they would have no means, anyone would have no means coming over there from that property?
No.
I actually bought that 4A and we're going to reconfigure it so that road, the existing road will be part of that lot. So nobody will have the right to go on it.
He's planning on seeking a special permit with the zoning board to build a residential house up on Cross Street next to, next to everybody else. So there'll be a house there, no longer the entrance.
Now, there's three houses going in, correct?
We're going to ask for two more. Yeah, wait, that's a whole different notices and stuff. They have to go for that. We're just working on the commercial tonight.
How many units?
Where? On this?
Yeah.
There's 20 of them.
Now, what type of, what type of commercial... ...building businesses?
There's no retail going in here. They're all, they call contractor base. I mean, like the GSN.
Right. So one thing I was concerned about is, as you know, which we're all under that aqueduct, under the water that's under the ground right there. And that's where we're all getting our well water. And, you know, I've got infants and kids. And one of my main concerns is the waste that's coming out of these contractor base and where it's being stored. And how's the water running off that goes through it? Is it going to be oil? Is it going to be, you know, hydraulic fluid that's going to get, or something else that's going to get into the ground that's going to impact this water?
I think so, Ben. The plumbing code calls for floor drains inside of these contractor base to go to an industrialized tight tank, which is a tight tank with 110% capacity beyond it. So even if one was to break, you'd still...
We have a separate part.
The drainage itself is being treated with, to exceed stormwater management. It has, it has deep-seated catch basins. It's going to have storm septic units that filter this stuff out, all prior to getting to a drainage basin itself. So that's going to take out the oils, the salts, the sands.
So wherever the dumpsters and the trash holding is being held, that water, any water runoff would go into your system to... And now is that, Cap?
Yes, there's an operation and maintenance plan that's part of the plan set and the drainage analysis. Absolutely. That gets reviewed by the town and approved as well.
How far from 39 Cross Street from the street is that building going to be? And where is that?
Very front page of that.
So I imagine these guys can do it in, you know, whatever hours they, most of the jar, they're going to be days, but, you know.
I can, I can give you a comparison because I'm not sure that I have a dimension line over there.
I'm just curious the site time. I mean, what do you think the agency of your company is?
To the edge of the property, it's got to be...
You get a rule on my truck, you want?
No.
It's 150 feet.
Building is over 300 feet to the property line, to the back.
39?
I'm sorry?
39.
To the back of, no, 39 is even further away. This is the one that's adjacent, kind of the closest point going out to Cross.
Over 30.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure which numbers. It would be...
That's where the access road is, the backup.
Yeah, right in the end. So yeah, over in here, the back that gets over in the end is going to be a 300 feet from where we're in.
And there's going to be green belts there, correct? Because they're not taking trees down.
Yeah, so what, the plan that, that we're working on with trees and wildlife is over in here, they want us to propose a turtle nesting area. That's where Cross Street is? Cross Street's further this way. This is the back of your property, I believe. Turtle nesting area that's going to be locked up in perpetuity. And it's going to have a conservation restriction, so it won't be able to be developed.
So, and I think you were at the meeting the other night? I don't remember. I was not. No, no, this guy here. Yeah, I was there. I think, are you Bob? Yeah. Hopefully, you're feeling better than you were the other night. Thank you. Yeah. Did we ever figure out what the hours of operations were going to be for the site? We haven't said any, to be honest with you. I mean, the house that's going to go in the back is going to be, that lot, those lots that they get approved are going to be for my kids. So we're going to be the closest to buy it to this project. And, I mean, unlike a supermarket that would have tractor trailers in there all night long and loading and unloading the backup because we don't plan that. I mean, these are everywhere. If you ever go look at them, these are everywhere. And, you know, most plumbers, unless they had to run in to get a fitting out of their shop for an emergency heat or something, you know, they're not going to have night hours. They're not retail. There's not going to be, there's no manufacturing or industrials or the other points going on in there. These are strictly for guys that get too big, they can't work out of their houses anymore. They can't have too many commercial trucks in their yards by law. They park them in there. The guys come in in the morning, get the trucks, they leave and then they, at the end of the day. They have a little office in the front. Some of them do, some of them don't even finish that. And, you know, they got to do their billing or whatever they have to do there. These are everywhere. I mean, they just put a, the ugliest one I've seen go up yet, across from the, the new Fishers on 28. It's right on the road. It's, I don't even know how they got the park in. It's, it's just, but if you, when you start looking at these, they're all over the place. They're, they fill a need. But yeah, there's going to be, like, no manufacturing there in the middle of the night, no heavy machine depressors or any of that stuff.
So no, no, if you see, I mean, it might be some HVAC companies, but they're not going to be creating and building ductwork there.
No. Nope. They're not to manufacture with it. This isn't industrial. You can't manufacture in there. It's only business. And it's no retail.
I understand. It's hard for you to know who would end up in.
Yeah, who's going to... As far as the lighting, I think somebody up here would ask about it. Can you tell us a little bit about that? Because that obviously is going to have...
us a little bit about that? Because that obviously is gonna have potentially an impact.
I'm interested in that too, is the lighting because it's gonna be facing toward Cross Street.
No, it's not. And you're, that's why they made us do the lighting plan. So you got, one of them will have to come over and take a look. This is the lighting drawing that was prepared by Omni Light.
And I'm happy to get rid of any lengths that the planning board lets me press.
We have this at pretty much there for safety.
Gotta have a few.
So if you look at these numbers, yeah, so when you see zero, that means that their lights casting nothing. Exactly. So the edge of this right here is all zeros all the way around. So beyond this, they should be... Yeah, it's, there are only the lights that face down. So you should...
We're a night, night light community, right?
A dark side.
A dark sky, thank you. Dark side community, so the lighting has to be facing down.
Get a general idea of where the caps light?
You know what? These LEDs, I was telling Bob about it, but when, when I've done up to the site so far, I've actually found that they're not, I don't think they're putting up the numbers that are even shown here. They've had to modify ballasts and I've even had a couple of commercial plazas where they've had to double up the, double them up. Yes, they do. If, if we feel, if we have dark spots, then we come out, we check it, we turn up the meter. But if there are any complaints with anything, you'd contact Bob because he's not looking for angry neighbors.
And wherever we were allowed to, if anybody's ever gone down Baker Street behind the high school, we're putting earth firms everywhere that we can to help the neighbors. So the exact, the supermarket literally was seven feet off the ground to fill. So from where that grid is now, it's not coming out to seven feet above it and then the supermarket was being built. We're working with the natural grades, we're gonna put some earth firms around there just to try to even do whatever more we're able to do.
Yeah, what it does, it's kind, yeah, it's almost like a... That's all, it's, it's, it is. It's a nice, a nice thing that Bob, you know, didn't have to do, but he asked to do up front to help block any type of potential sound or, or visual. Realistically, there's woods, there's wetlands, there's...
And the nesting area.
Nesting area in between, but it, it can't hurt, that's for sure.
There's a lot of wildlife in that, so.
Oh, I'm sure there is. Yep. The, the fisheries and wildlife is, is actually the conservation restriction we've been working with them on is gonna, it's gonna lock the majority of this land up forever. So they're gonna have lots and lots of forests and stuff.
Well, that's good that there are turtles and that will be protected.
That's right, they will.
Will there be a permanent fence around the property or is it basically the burbs?
No, I'm not putting a fence around it.
And with turtles, they don't, they don't want fences. They have to leave them elevated.
Who says that you're donating land on Cross Street?
There's gonna be a conservation restriction.
Six inches high for the wildlife.
Oh, no, it's, I can show you pretty much exactly. The, the land is gonna be the majority of this back piece, all up in here and up in here in the turtle nesting area.
Deer will just walk right through there and like, like nothing, you know? If it's fenced off, one can get on the inside and it'd just be like, you know, stuff.
Their biggest concern is this floor stuff on the top, and so that's, that was their number one priority.
So this is the access road?
Yes, that's, that are the gravel, exactly. Yeah, so this, the commercial is gonna be this walk over here and then we're looking to do residential with this. So four of the lots, we'll have, we wanna put a house and then we wanna put two houses for Bob's kids back here. And with a, with a driveway and that's it. The rest of the land will lock up.
Where the drives would go over.
Yeah, the driveway would come up over here.
I think he's renting these.
I believe that that was the best way because if we were to put a driveway, no, no, meant to come over here.
This is what then? At least it's not.
If you were to, if you were to try to come up this way too, people would be concerned about access into the back in future. So putting it on this side gets immediate all of that. If you have a house here and it's somebody's yard, then you don't have to worry about it. So I think that was kind of a game, there's no intention to get over here from here. It's just...
The water, any water from here is gonna go back in and not...
The water that's down.
We've got rivers down when it comes down, because I'm ready.
You guys should call for pizza.
We have rivers running down. And that's where we get the runoff. I mean, the, the road just is, if you actually go up and look at the roads, the roads actually...
So you can come for that, I hope.
Yeah, especially in the winter, undermining the road on either side and I'm getting, it's down, it might be torn. So it's gonna turn against us, add into it. Because when this bridge gonna get replaced, at some point, you know, it's gonna be high for all of us.
Oh, yeah. The road's gonna be closed.
And that's for a long time.
I don't think we're gonna, you're gonna have a problem, especially up here. The water's pitching down this naturally, as you can see from our contours. I don't see any water heading out your way. I think, I think you're getting a lot of the water coming up and down through those, they call them cross country culverts on the side of the road and the wetlands that bleed out into the road. Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. But again, we're gonna be back in front of the planning board for this, which you'll get notified. And then we have zoning board appeals for a special permit for these houses, which we hope you'll support as well.
And conservation, if you still have...
Oh, absolutely, conservation. Yep, we have conservation to finish this and then for the residential houses to finish it up. We appreciate you guys having us tonight and letting us talk. This was nice.
It's nice to let the neighbors know.
Well, yeah, yeah, this is the best way to be able to let everybody know. I mean, I don't have everyone's phone number, so it's tough. So this is great.
I don't know about anybody else, but I just have to appreciate what Bob has done so far in our community where he has been willing to talk with us and like, for example, that big project that he did over here, the drainage station, for the sake of our community, he extended that, changed the format so that we could collect more tax revenues. So, you know, if you guys have issue, talk, talk to them because they are very good listeners.
Yeah, and I would say if there is somebody making a racket in the commercial part in the future, call Bob because nobody's gonna let them know faster than...
Well, now, she's been in town over twenty years.
Yeah.
And, and again, and these guys know, this is our third meeting here, um, at planning board. But, you know, even though that back plan, that's why we have to come back, to put the two houses in its own business. So is it appropriate to put businesses behind those houses? No. So I don't wanna do that. So, so that made no sense. Is that a whole nother step I have to go through? Yes. But it just, it makes no sense to put a business, that lot is business somewhere in the corner and then the land behind it. But behind those people in Paradise and you guys, it, it just doesn't make sense. So we tried to put the least impact we could come in off of forty-four and we can get two lots, similar to Paradise, just basically a fancy driveway going back there, two houses on them. And if you look at the, if we had the turtle map tonight, but I don't think we do, if you see the amount of land we're disturbing versus how much we're donating, you're gonna be shocked because even though the two house lots, if we get, get them, come back and they're okay, I think we're only using a quarter of an acre or something, or a third of an acre, each one maybe, out of the, out of the four acre lots. Each one of those lots are four acres and it's less than a half acre that we can actually disturb for the houses. So there's eight acres almost of this thing and back there, all wooded and...
And it's all gonna be trusted.
Yeah, just like we have a hundred year now, they have it in a, I think it's called Wildland Trust. Part of the process that they're gonna have us do is we actually have to come up with a recorded plan showing the meets and bounds of the land that's gonna be restricted. And that gets reported along with a legal document by the state.
And the acreage of that is, I'm just...
It's significant. It's over a one point, it's at least a one point five to one ratio of them restricting land to us being able to use. So it's more land being restricted than we can actually use. And they don't just take wetland, they want upland because of the ski sheet. So they, so...
We already saved all the wetlands and now it's time to save the uplands.
Well, that's exactly it, so.
Yeah, do the tortoises like the uplands?
They do, especially, this is the eastern box turtle, so they, yeah.
It's a tortoise.
Some of the fish don't wanna be too warm. I live, last year and a half, I own more of both different turtles and I know this one, to be honest with you.
So I would entertain a motion that...
I think it's all done.
What?
I think we already continued it.
Did we already continue it?
Yeah.
Did we already make the motion?
We've opened it in public discussion.
Did we make the motion, you know, Kathy?
I think we got distracted. She's saying no.
I thought we got distracted.
Oh, we did, but you didn't say that, did you? Well, we have to wait for conservation to be...
We made the motion.
So I guess we can schedule...
Concon meets...
And we voted.
On the twenty-second. Good. Concon meets on the twenty-second if we wanted to stay subject to the twenty-fourth or...
We'll, we'll, we'll wait until they let us know.
Well, then there's not enough time.
Yeah, can we be put on and if for some reason on the twenty-second we get continued or delayed, then we can request a continuance. Otherwise, you'll have your forty-eight hours posting. If that's okay with the board.
That would make sense, too.
It's only forty-eight hours posting? Do we have time to notify? I guess...
No, I think that's what he's saying, is there's not enough time because Concon meeting's forty-eight hours before ours. If we wait till then, he doesn't have enough time to be on our agenda properly, unless we put him on it now.
Okay. Just consumers, just be aware that if, if it gets rescheduled, then he will be here for the next meeting after that. I guess we can notice them, right?
A butter's gonna have to be notified after it starts.
Well, they don't.
Once we start the process, they're expected to keep up to it, just as we are. Are we making this to the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Yeah, so we just wanted to know when the next...
And if it goes past that, we'll extend it, I guess.
Did you say the twenty-fourth for the next meeting?
Yeah. Motion to continue to the twenty-fourth meeting for the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jamie.
Can we hear from that one?
So the next on our agenda is continued hearing to establish a standard site plan review for marijuana uses.
Did, do you have that conservation, do you have Nick Laney?
He does a lot of that stuff.
On this one, for instance? Is he working on this one?
Nope. No, because it was approved prior and they had less impact than what was approved with Market Basket, they didn't put it to a peer review. And they, Bob actually asked our former agent, Lenore of Wetland Strategies, to do a site visit, just take a look.
So we need action from the standard site plan review for marijuana uses for the cost.
Right, like right now, the minor is two fifty, the major's a thousand. The marijuana one, when we were doing it, that was, well, twelve forty with the two for forty for the special permit. So do you wanna keep that marijuana use at a thousand or do you want it just to go with your regular site plan?
No. My opinion is we're gonna charge the fee, the highest fee we possibly can. That's my opinion.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd, I'd go higher than a thousand, but if a thousand's what you guys want, we'll go a thousand.
Does a thousand work?
A thousand works to me, for me, this is just my opinion, that, because I didn't wanna differentiate one business from another.
I like that.
Um, you know, it's, it's a business where they're doing a, a major, that's for a major, correct? Yeah, so if they're doing a major site plan change, then...
I agree, it should be the same, just because we've also been relieved of the permitting process. We're actually just back to our site plan review. So it makes sense that I think that we do charge the fee, but...
Was that a motion?
My motion to approve a fee of a thousand.
I agree with everyone.
Second?
Exactly.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Just a clarification, it's a thousand dollars, no matter if it's minor or major?
No, I think it's a thousand for the major and...
And a thousand for marijuana?
It's for major.
We're keeping it the same as other businesses?
Currently, the board charges two fifty for minor, a thousand for major, and a thousand for marijuana use.
Well, we no longer do marijuana use, we just do...
We do site plan.
Right, I, okay, so to be clear, my opinion is we should keep our, if we have a minor marijuana site plan review, we should keep it at two fifty, and if we have a major, it should be a thousand.
To be consistent with other business, businesses.
Correct, because we're not doing a special permitting, we're only doing site plan reviews.
So you wanna make a modification to her, um, motion?
Well, I think it's a clarification, because I didn't realize it was...
Neither did I.
Thousand for minor and major. So, motion to withdraw the previous motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're drawing.
So I make a motion to keep our fee structure the same as it is for all other businesses. So a minor review is two hundred and fifty dollars and a major review is one thousand dollars for either marijuana review.
Right, or site plan review.
For, for site plan review.
Yeah.
It is for site plan review.
Currently, the board charges two fifty for minor site plan review, a thousand dollars for a major site plan review, and a thousand dollars for marijuana use. Okay? So we want two fifty for a minor site plan review regardless, and a thousand dollars for major site plan review regardless.
Correct.
You, you keep saying for marijuana, and I don't see that anywhere.
We don't do marijuana use.
It's right there.
It says right there, but we don't do it.
Oh, sure.
Oh, I got, I got one.
I have one.
I'm reading off the actual checklist.
Yes, but it's...
Right. It's, it's like the short form agenda type thing?
But that's the special permit fee, in which we're not doing it.
Right, so is that struck from our, is that...
It was included with the special permit fee.
Right, it was...
But now, we're, we're not doing the special permit, we're just doing the site plan review. We're doing the site plan review for a major, a minor change for any site plan review. We're doing a, a major change for any site plan review. And then we, we had on our books a thousand dollars for marijuana use, site plan review.
So I could put mine on the whole range of this a thousand, so that was my question?
Oh, okay.
If you wanted to keep it like that or change it to...
I agree with you. I think we should go two fifty for minor and a thousand for major.
And strike the third amount, it's not needed.
It's not needed anymore.
Right, regardless of what it is. Okay, cool.
And that's consistent with Mark's motion, which I think Pete seconded.
So to, and to strike the special permit fee, so moved as part of my motion.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, done. Okay. Now, to approve the meeting minutes for September twelfth. Yes, that's where we're gonna...
Brian, I read these, I read these when they, when they were sent to me. And I'd like to make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September twelfth.
Second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I haven't accepted that.
Okay. So now, old business is to schedule a meeting, but with the engineer...
That's not part of our...
Pardon me?
This is not part of our schedule. I, just...
Okay. Old business is to schedule a meeting with engineers regarding fifty-seven long Point Road.
Is the meeting gonna be... Is the meeting going to be there or is it going to be like in one of the, maybe here? It won't be onsite, right? It'll be like here at night?
I'd like to have them come see us.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
You know, I don't want it at 10 o'clock in the morning.
No, no.
Yep, I work for a living. And everyone does except for me, because.
Great. That's true.
What?
That's absolutely true.
Yeah.
And I'm proud of it. I work very hard.
I know you do. You work, right, but I don't work in Laker.
Could we see if the meeting could be set up for our next meeting? Or is that not?
I think we had discussed, well, at the previous meeting, we had discussed, and I think it was.
No, you did, you're right. There were days that they weren't around.
There were two days, it was the 28th or the 29th.
Of October?
Of October.
That they were available?
That, the board members that were present were available.
Okay, that's not on a meeting date.
Right, it was a Monday or a Tuesday.
It doesn't matter to me either, whatever works for everybody else.
The engineers, and they were available either day.
Yeah, okay, that works for me.
Could we have it at 7:00 PM?
What were the dates again?
28th.
Well, that's what we're off of them.
Okay. I can do either one of those days.
You guys come back from Boston, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
28th or 29th, you guys have a preference?
They're the same to me.
Whichever night they want.
Yeah, I guess whatever they want.
Okay.
Whatever night they can make, we'll be there.
It's on a 28th.
Or 29th.
I have another point I'd like to make. The drawings for this, I've seen them because, but I haven't, I'd like to get the drawings for this.
Before this meeting? I mean, I say that because I would too.
I'd like them right this minute because they're all over Town Hall. We have a lot of town employees that have seen them. The meeting that they're trying to make, there's only, there's one series of meetings that 57 Long Point Road still has to do, and that's with us. And we have quite a few issues in this. We're going to have to get Nick Laney involved in this or something. There's, this is going to be a major, major site plan review.
Yeah.
Sort of thing.
I agree.
And everyone else has the drawings and they've seen them, and I haven't.
That bothers them.
And I am absolutely.
Yeah.
Tied off.
We would love.
Okay, so.
Because I know they exist.
Yeah, I'm sure they do. If they, if everyone else saw them except for us, they do exist.
Why is that? What kind of system is that?
So the meeting we just scheduled is a preliminary meeting just to talk about it?
Yes.
It's not our public hearing to make it.
No.
So is that when they want to present us with the drawings?
I don't know, it's kind of just like an overview kind of thing. I mean, I'd definitely reach out to him tomorrow and ask if there are drawings of the old one.
Yeah.
If so, if they're electronic copies, that'd be better.
Yeah.
Thanks.
If that would be, if that would be possible.
Yeah, I'll definitely.
Yeah, we would like to see the.
They came asking and looking for our planner. We don't have a planner. So what do you do? Well, you'll have to meet with the whole board is the only way we can get around that. It's very handy to, and with open meeting laws and stuff like that, it's difficult to get quorums and then to not have, you know, sometimes there's, I mean, it's difficult working completely in public on a very preliminary meeting, unlike your first meeting. Oftentimes, there are issues that somebody says, hell, no, you know, and they get squashed by the time there's a second meeting and stuff like that, and you don't, you know, there should be smallish meetings rather than bigish meetings. It just, this is just one of the hard things about not having a professional in the office that can, you know, fix all the rough edges and get us the drawings because like somebody in the office, in our office, can talk to us where we can't talk to each other about what we think of it. I mean, for instance, we're not allowed to do the business of the planning board outside of this room.
Right.
But if you have a planner or a, you know, like you guys have a conservation agent, they, you know, they do all the, you know, they set up all the negotiations and then they give it to you to approve.
And they have the technical background to provide advice also.
We're missing that part. We don't even get a chance to. Talk or negotiate or do anything that isn't just completely, because there's no way of taking a contentious project like that and just hand us the drawing at the last minute and ask for an opinion. I mean, that's not.
Ask for a vote.
We can't do that. Yeah.
Right.
Anybody gets a chance to see it ahead of time. So.
I actually, I don't think I would be able to work off of electronic copies. If they're able to bring us something in writing that they can drop it off with you and I'll swing by and pick it up. I just find with those electronic ones, I'm always zooming in and trying to print it at my office and it's just.
I like electronic.
Kathy, can I just ask?
You can do both.
They're trying to set up a meeting on next Monday or Tuesday, or two Mondays and Tuesdays from now. What's the conflict that they can't come on a meeting night?
Oh, they just prefer to be separate at a different meeting.
So volunteers are going to rearrange our schedules? I don't know. I guess if there was a valid reason for not having it on a meeting night.
Well, we could always go on a night that isn't and then be aggravated when we get here.
Oh.
What? Did I say that?
I thought.
No, no, but that's, I like that. I enjoy those.
Lake Kim will be present, right? Okay, so.
And we did put a town planners' ink just to recircle back on our request, on our budget request, right? Again this year? We did, I think.
Well, we.
We've asked for a long time.
Quite a few people who have voted against it are no longer there, so things are, things are looking up, I think.
If we can get a set of electronic plans and get Barbara a set of paper plans.
Doesn't have to be a full set like this, just the, you know, a copy is great.
Eleven by seventeen.
Whatever. I don't want to spend this fortune on it. You know, these are wicked expensive to print up, hassle. I know they're important, I'm sorry.
We're not.
Will that be a publicly advertised meeting?
I mean, if that was coming out of our budget, you know, I'd complain.
Okay.
It's the only way that, it's the only way we're allowed to do it.
I know.
Okay.
Then why are we doing it not on our meeting night?
So I guess I'd like to make a motion that Kathy, when she talks with the developer, ask them, you know, why they're unable to make it on a regular scheduled meeting night and get an explanation for them before we confirm the appointment for, was it the 20? Maybe she can just email us and Brian can tell her whether that's okay or not. What do you think, guys?
I think that's reasonable.
I've gone to the ZBA for an informal hearing, and they can do it after all the other business is over.
Yeah.
So I don't see why we couldn't schedule that on a regular night. I mean, we all have pretty full schedules.
Yep.
So is that a motion to cancel? Let's read a really, a motion on the floor for that other meeting.
Yep, cancel the prior motion.
Was it a motion actually to schedule?
To schedule.
The 28th or 29th, that was more of an informal, we agreed to, but I don't think.
So I'm making a motion that Kathy contact them and tell them that we'd like an explanation as to why that is that they can't, you know, is there a reason why we can't have it on a regular night? And then if she can contact Brian and let him know what their answer is, then Brian can tell them whether or not we at all are available on the 28th or the 29th.
How about no? Our public meeting night is the second and fourth Thursday of the month. If you want to get on the agenda.
Okay.
That's what's publicly advertised throughout the town. That's when the town people expect a planning board meeting. Come to it.
Okay.
But send the drawings a week ahead of time. Send the drawings a week ahead of time.
At least a week, everything's due a week.
Well, you have to.
I.
For it to be advertised.
No, I'm.
Everything's due at least a week, we need more time.
They have to have the drawings in like 10 days before the meeting. If it's an official meeting, if it's informal, that's fine, that's our first view of you. We're not making a vote, it's nothing. It's informational only if it's an informal, informal hearing.
And we're still, we're still on camera, and I'm not going to have any drawings presented to me on camera first time and have a camera watching me take a first look at a drawing. I don't think that's right.
I agree with you, Steve.
That's, that's not the way we do it. We get the drawings ahead of time. Period.
We can ask for the drawings ahead of time.
So my motion, is someone going to second it?
Yeah, second.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And approve the meeting minutes for September 12th. Oh, no, that's.
They already did that, didn't they?
Yeah, we did that.
We voted on it.
Uh huh. Okay, update Shamrock's dates.
The last time we had a peer review checklist, has it been? So this is the same one we've already approved?
It's the same one we didn't approve.
We didn't approve.
Have we heard back from Nick? I do not believe so. Okay, so you can table this.
This one. Peer review consultant business, there's no, we don't have a peer review consultant. We had Nick Laney that we use as a board, but this, this is the one that. You see this one?
No.
No.
We didn't agree to that.
We don't use that one.
We didn't agree to that.
It's in the item mark 4B.
Yeah, we didn't.
That was my point. 4B.
Keep going.
I thought we approved this.
No, we're not, we're not sending it out for quotes. That's not the.
But this, this flow chart.
Send what out?
We approved this on 10/25 last year.
We didn't approve it on 10/25.
It says so. You don't think we did?
I don't think we did. I, I remember this real clearly.
What was the, what was the line item on here that was the objectionable item? Do you remember?
This, well, peer review consultant sends planning with the quote. We don't send peer review out for quotes. We've never, ever, ever done that.
For quote, peer review's a planning staff, the quote.
Planning board staff notifies peer review consultant to begin review. No, don't do that.
Well, do you, do you think that those three items right in a rows ink are there because you kind of need to get a, an idea of what this is going to cost so we can get back to the contractor and say, hey, he's saying it's going to be this much money to do a thorough review? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The all three, those three items right in a row can happen very quickly.
By chance.
I agree.
Yep.
But if he comes back and says, whoa, 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 this one particular job, this is not like the other things, I can't do this for, say, 2,000 that you held back, this is going to be more and I'm going to need help.
Right.
Isn't that, doesn't that fall right in those, in those three, in those three jobs right there? You know what I mean? And this, and this flow chart gives that ability to do that?
Well, but you have to go. Yes, I mean, if, if for some reason the quote exceeds the amount of money available, this would be a convenient flow chart to use. Otherwise, it isn't very convenient at all.
I don't, I don't remember approving this. I wasn't at that meeting.
I, I remember, I remember, actually, I said, who, who is this peer review consultant? And you told me, well, Nick Laney is the peer review consultant.
I told you that we use Nick Laney as our peer review.
Peer review.
And we have.
Yeah.
For years.
Right.
Until we got Chris Peck and then we got his brother.
Right, Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Right.
And then the selectmen suggested that we use them as opposed to peer review. And what that ended up doing was that ended up throwing a stick in the spokes because once they left, we didn't have anyone to do that again or do that anymore. And there was a void because when they left, they were no longer working for the town. So they could no longer represent the town with what they have already made decisions on. So it was bad in, in several different aspects. Okay? So some of this, the flow chart, is the way it has been done in years past. However, 10/25/18, I do not believe I was involved in adopting this and voting on this. But typically, planning board reviews the project, yes. Planning board determines if peer review is required, yes. Planning board staff sends project to peer review consultant for a quote. Hmm, sometimes, yes. We send it to.
But not usually, the peer review.
We don't get a quote.
It's not engineering. The peer review is, he's only allowed to look at the work that the other engineer did and check that work. He doesn't do any new work at all. So it is always, it's never a huge bill because he's just inspecting the other person's work at, on a desk.
It depends.
Well.
It depends. Because when we had Baker Lane and we sent that to Nick Laney, it was considerably larger than something like a five lot subdivision. Okay? Baker Lane was huge. Okay? And that went to Nick Laney.
But it's not just an on the desk review. When Sataka Trail got reviewed, they went out and they shot grades and checked things inside drains and made sure things were done to plan and things weren't and.
No, that, that engineer was working for the developer when they shot the grades. And they were, they were building, they were making up the.
As built.
The as built.
Yep.
And you don't need peer review for an as.
So you, do you have a problem with there being too many steps in this checklist?
Yes, and the steps not being part of our.
Could we put a wording in as like if needed or rather than, because I think that if you delete them, then, then, you know, the people, things might come to a standstill. You know what I mean?
How would they come?
But here's the other thing I'd like to think about.
We're not going to stop.
Yeah, let's say that we had a development come in here and we've never seen anything like that type of development coming into town. And let's say that we, they were proposing some sort of factors that we really don't have somebody on staff to deal with. And we have to have, we have to hire a specialist. Maybe it's water, maybe it's, you know, who knows what kinds of things can go on. I think the ideal was to just neutralize it, even though if we're using somebody in, you know, that we're commonly using, that they're saying peer review consultant in case that ended up being a more expensive review, because we should have the power to do that. We should be able to say, developer, we want to make sure, we want another engineer to tell us that what your engineer is telling us is true.
We have that, we have that power.
We have that now. So I think this is just outlining how that cost is going to be communicated back to the developer, right? Because the cost of having a peer review is entirely borne by the consumer or by the by the consumer or by the developer and not by the taxpayer.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
And it has been in the past.
And we, and we do have a fee structure to have it reviewed. And then we have the ability to increase the fee structure for the size of the development.
But don't we have a right to have a street pass through?
We do that. But i- if you look at this, it just, read where it says planning board on it and read where it says staff on it.
Yep.
I, I would rather see more planning board in toward the middle of this chart.
Okay.
Analysts there.
I, I kind of disagree, Zink. I don't think it needs to be. So you're saying this stuff would be spaced out every two weeks then?
No.
Well, then when would we...
We do it just the way we do it. Without asking, you know, without having to leave this room. I mean, we, we just say, send this to Nick Laney.
All right, but...
And that's the first three.
Right. But here's what this checklist does. Then this gives you the ability to say, well, you know, he's going to, and now he comes back to us, if you want it to be us. He's going to say, I can't do it for $2,000 or I can't do it for $1,500. I'm going to need two more helpers.
And that's number, Noel, well, no, he, he said it's going to, he would say that it's going to cost this. And that's number four.
Right.
Peer review consultant sends planning board staff the quote.
I'm okay with that.
Or notifies this.
But what he does right now is he calls Brian.
Yeah.
Which is a lot easier.
It should be in writing though.
That's, that's not the way to do it though.
The quote should be in writing.
Well, he...
These are phone calls, voicemails, that's a small money quote.
That's flying under the radar and that's like...
You know, I, I think in, in writing, I feel like this is just a lot of ways that we're all saying how it shouldn't be done. Nobody's saying this is the way it should be done then. Right. Well, exactly. The thing is, when the guy says it's going to cost in this range, it's not going to be a fixed number.
That's totally fine as long as I have that piece of paper to hand to the developer and say, here's what it's going to cost you. It's either going to be $2,000 or it's going to be 12,000 depending on...
Right. Well, we want, we want you to put up 12,000.
Right. And it's not subjective. We're showing you this is what the professional fees are going to be.
Exactly. Right. And not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Right. So it's not like we're, we're not, we don't want to give the developer the presentation that we're extra. But Kathy, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, well, that was just my question because I kind of wanted a clarification on this because this checklist is what was discussed at the meeting, all the things that were going to be done.
Yeah.
Like first, like Jamie was supposed to send a letter. So I don't, but when I spoke to him, we said nothing about the letter and I asked about the review and he said that you were going to take care of it. So it was very unclear. Has anybody contacted Nick Laney?
For which?
For the Shamrock. Because it, when I listened to that minutes again, it appeared that Jamie was going to do it, but he said that you were going to do it as planning board. So...
I, I think that this exercise is to help Kathy through the process.
Yes.
So she can help facilitate this stuff getting done.
Correct, yes.
I think that's why she's trying to take stuff off our plate by saying, by planning board staff. And she's trying to be helpful and not trying to usurp us.
Did you make this flow chart?
No.
Okay.
But I think we talked about at one point having a checklist.
For Paspen Estates is what you're talking about?
No, Shamrock.
Well, at structure.
Same, same thing.
Who's going to do this? Is it supposed to be the engineer? Is it supposed to be the planning board or...
Can, can you call Nick Laney and have him come and check out Shamrock Estates?
Again?
Aye. What's to check out?
He has...
He's going to look at it because they want to, it's almost done. So he has to close out what hasn't been done. He's going to see if the catch basins are cleaned out. He's going to see if the, why?
If you don't have his word, we're going to have to go by the...
I'm not going up there. And you're not going up there.
I think it's, it's going to go by the developers.
I think we should...
And I'm not willing to do that.
You should hire someone to do this.
That's why we're hiring Nick Laney. And then because we don't have, we don't have a highway surveyors doing it anymore. And we don't have a highway surveyor's brother that's doing it anymore.
Right.
So that's why we have Nick Laney. So if Kathy can call Nick and have him go up and check out the subdivision, and if he needs to pick up plans, you're in the down low. He can come pick up a set of plans from Kathy. He can go up and check it out. And then all he has to do is submit a bill.
So we don't need to let the developer know what the cost is going to be?
No.
Okay. We just bill him?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Because he wants his lots.
That, I agree with you. In this case, that's sort of like a post inspection. So it, it is, like you said, we don't need to do a quote. We don't need to...
Because we're past that point.
We have an inspection coming. I mean, he, he knows he has an inspection that he has to pay for.
Yes.
The developer knows he has to pay for an inspection.
I think that's good. That's great.
Yeah.
Could I make suggestion that maybe, anybody that wants to have input, because it seems like there's a lot of input towards this flow chart. And maybe it's very helpful for Kathy if we update or have her update something that everybody can agree on. So if there's stuff that people don't like, maybe make suggestion now or mark up your copy. Make changes of how you think that should go. And then maybe we do vote on something that we agree on.
Some of this is from the beginning of a project.
It's all...
I understand, but if we had this going from the beginning of the project, we wouldn't be going backwards to this now.
Uh huh. What we're doing now is we're going back to this right now.
So if she has an accurate chart to move forward with...
What?
No holes are left.
If you had done, that means the funds up front, then they would be there.
Correct.
They'd be there.
Or at least a retainer of some sort.
And, and, and the, the boys used to just go out there like, what they should have done is they should have been, or their department should have been compensated for. And they didn't because the selectmen just said, oh, use them.
Right. I'm in favor of the process as it's listed out, just because I think it adds structure to an obviously ambiguous situation.
We didn't create this.
No, I...
No.
But do you have a problem with it?
Yes.
Is it the number of steps?
No, it's that we didn't create it.
Okay, but it's...
But we're asking...
Let's say it's, let's say we did create it.
If we did create it, then I'm all for it.
Well, but I'm not going to have it created.
What's the problem? It's already, it's just written. I mean, it's, it's a checklist that you would change?
Yeah.
And so I've suggested that maybe you make changes and then we adopt your changes.
Well, I'd like to hear his changes before we adopt them.
I agree. Well, I'm, I'm saying that throughout the board. Everybody make their changes.
Yeah, for closing out, I think, I think what we can do is we can have a process for closing out, you know, for closing out a job that, that involves us. You know, I mean, that would be a, it's not a peer review flow chart. That has, peer review has nothing to do with, this is...
No, Brian said it. This checklist is typically for something right from the very beginning.
Maybe it's to be called the subdivision construction checklist.
Or something, something like that at the end of a job. So there, there would be a process there. The, at the end of a job is, is not a time to start talking about peer review.
No, no.
A totally, totally agreed to.
No, we're not talking at the end of the job. We're talking when the asphalt comes in, he's going to check to make sure you get the right depth. When the gravel goes in, he's got to make sure that it's a correct compaction. When the drainage goes in, he's got to make sure that, that everything's going in according to the drawings, the contract drawings. And then there's an Asbeld plan that the surveyor produces that provides us with the evidence that the drainage and the, the leaching and the, the retention basins are all done according to the, the design drawings. And that was like...
But that's more like subdivision. So it's not the, the finishing parts of the road going into the, for the subdivision.
That's what the peer review is all about.
Right. But sometimes we're going to have peer review for things that aren't, like, okay, let's talk about the, let's say a, a facility came in here that wanted to have retail marijuana and they said, here's our traffic study and it says we're going to have two cars a week. And we said, hmm, like to have a peer review on that. It's at your cost. I, I see this checklist as being for something like that, something that we, right now, I mean, maybe you would also impose it when you're in a subdivision plan and maybe that is the time?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's okay. So this can be modified down to be in...
Right. Down, simplified.
A drive by.
Correct.
Or whatever.
Whatever's required.
But if, you know, if, if you're going to have somebody do a traffic study, they should do a traffic study.
And if we want that, how are we going to communicate how that's going to happen? We're going to see the project? We're going to say, uh-oh, we want, we want another engineer to take a look?
Well, yeah.
What's it going to cost?
We want it, we want a peer review, provide us with a traffic study.
Or we choose the contractor to do the peer review.
No, no. Well, we do choose a contractor.
To Barbara's point right there though. She just received the traffic study that seemed false.
Where?
In her example.
In the example that a developer provides information we don't have confidence in.
That's when you hand it to the engineer and say, does this look good to you?
Right. And that's this...
We've done that before.
Mm-hmm.
Right. That's what the peer review, right.
Right. So should we motion to table this until next meeting? Anybody has feedback and changes? Redo it, whatever. If we have a better checklist. Zink has a whole folder of great checklists. Maybe there's something we'll search for.
I know. I use different checklists.
I know, but you've got some stuff that's already been made. So if there's something better.
Yeah. They are. They're, they're created by the state and, and they're comprehensive and they have checked and they have, sometimes they have places where there are two arrows coming out of a box, which is way checklists are, you know, usually. You know, if this goes this way or that way. Not just a...
Yeah, I get you.
Do this, do this, do this, do this.
I get it.
Well, hell, don't tell me what to do. So what's all this new business?
You know, all us donuts, this came from the state.
No, it didn't.
Did we vote on this?
We looked at several drafts. There was an attempt to add some structure to things that we had otherwise didn't have structure on. Simplify the process for the people that are handling these checks and handling all of that.
They're trying to make it easier to, easier to work without a planner. And I'm not going to help somebody work without a planner.
No.
That's just it.
Yeah. Okay. So let's table this until next week. Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two weeks.
Yep.
Okay. New business, the CPTC, Paul workshops. Anyone have anything to contribute?
I will tell you that the governor's office has been making some really bold moves having to do with housing. And an area like ours should really be paying very close attention to the revamping of potentially 40B, 40R kind of stuff. How are we going to get some zoning, some houses built? I also looked at some national information. Our county is one of the tightest in the nation. So I expect we'll continue to see pressure. We should all be paying close attention to that, even if it means going to these classes. I missed the one they had in September. There was like a, Zink and I, Zink, I think, heard about it. Was there something up in Holy Cross they were having?
Oh, yeah. I go to those.
About the, yeah.
Yeah. I've gone to most of these, but the, but there are new ones that keep coming up. For instance, zoning with overlay districts is a new one. And that's a, I don't know who Jim Robbins is, but they, but they have, everything they do is pretty good. I mean, they're, they're very thorough, very, you know, the, to underline what Barbara said, the stuff the state is considering is stuff that any planning board in a traditional small town like this would absolutely hate. What they want to do, the, the major thing is they want to get rid of, they, they don't like the idea of formates. Well, formates are difficult. And they're more difficult now that we're getting into stormwater. The stormwater stuff with a formate, there are so many streets that you can find in Lakeville where somebody's formatted and done a terrible job getting rid of the water off of the driveway and stuff like that. And that can be fixed. So they have some ways of fixing that, but they figure the way now, but you have to remember that we, we are, they, they can't change these rules except by changing them through town meeting. And what they mostly want to do is they want to be able to take zoning rules and laws out of the 66% vote to a 51% vote. So it's easier to change zoning.
Two thirds?
From two thirds to, to a simple majority. And that would make, would, would, would have us, there'd be a lot of quick changes all over the place in all the towns and stuff like that. And that would just be a way, way helter skelter for any planning board to consider. And I mean, most planning boards would just hate that because it takes so long to, you know, to get anything moving and built and accepted and stuff like that.
Well, they're going to drive density too, which our community truly hasn't had a lot of density yet.
Well...
That's just on their agenda.
We do have some density.
We have some, but it could be a lot worse.
Yeah, but it's...
Noel, it couldn't be a lot worse if you're going to provide water and sewer.
Yeah.
Excellent question.
That, that's going to turn the, that's pretty good right now. So we're, we're like seven, we're, we're not quite at 7 and 1/2 percent. But what will happen after they do the, after the census in 2020, we're going to drop. Because we haven't, there's a lot of new housing that has to get added on to that. They only do theirs every 10 years. So we're going to fall away, you know, like at least half a point or a full point lower than that. So that'll look bad again. And it takes so long because every time you build some affordable housing, in the meantime, you've been building even more unaffordable housing. And so you're actually, you're actually falling behind.
I don't know if we have that much going up.
Right.
Unaffordable.
It's, it's, it's amazing how it hasn't affected Lakeville. It, it could have been worse.
Yes.
But what saved us all along is by not having water in, in most of the neighborhoods.
Yeah. And most of our...
And it's a bad way of saying it on TV.
Most of our land is subjected to wetlands and...
Yeah. But it's a, it comes, you know, every five years, they come back with the same idea. But they, before it goes into effect, the town will have to vote on it. And pass it by two thirds.
I think I'm more concerned about the things the state will impose at the state level that we'll have to adjust to. Last thing on the agenda was Kathy wanted feedback on, on the format. Do you have thoughts on the format of the streamlined agenda?
I like that.
Yeah.
Streamlined, yes. Very much, very much.
And I like how you have the red too. That's kind of nice.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.